A Disability Inclusion Partner. This award is to highlight the district's commitment to creating workplaces that are welcoming for all employees who rely on accommodations to carry out their work successfully. Inclusion is, of course, a crucial aspect in retaining high-quality employees and talented employees who are dedicated to serving our families and our students within our schools. The district was nominated by the ambassadors at Lifescape, and we thank them for recognizing our commitment to disability inclusion as well. And one of the award, you can see on the graphic here off to the right-hand side, is a sticker that we are able to proudly display at the entrance of our building, and it is, in fact, displayed there already, so I had to just take a photo of that to share that with you. But in researching a little bit more about disability inclusion, according to the National Survey of Consumer Attitudes, towards companies that hire people with disabilities, 92% of the American public view companies that hire people with disabilities more favorably, and 87% of the public also prefers to give their business to companies that hire people with disabilities. And certainly, we know that, you know, our students become adults and become very employable in our community, and our community embraces all employees and puts them to work in whatever area they're interested in. So we thank Vicki and Patty for stopping by to share that award with us and encourage, of course, all other employers in our community to embrace those who are working and needing an accommodation of some sort. And next, public service, as you know, is a high-level job. You all are at the front of our room here, and no higher level, perhaps, than taking place in our nation's capital, Washington, D.C. And tonight, we are joined by a young man, Champ Baumgartner, who is a student at Jefferson High School. He will be in Washington, D.C. in March to witness it all happening firsthand. He received an honor and award that was bestowed on him by the South Dakota Department of Education, and Champ has prepared a few words for you this evening. I will invite him up to share those.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to announce that I've recently been selected by the South Dakota Department of Education to join Senators Thune and Rounds and represent our state as a delegate of the United States Senate Youth Program in Washington, D.C. for a week this coming March. During this week, I'll have the honor of meeting the President, a U.S. Supreme Court Justice, and various different cabinet leaders. Additionally, this scholarship comes with a $10,000 scholarship provided by the Hearst Foundation with an encouragement to continue public service in government and college. I would like to extend a big thank you to everyone in my community, and particularly my school family at Jefferson High School. I would also like to extend a special thank you to Principal Dan Conrad and my counselor, Mr. Matsky. Under Principal Conrad's leadership, Jefferson has truly embraced its values of inclusivity and respect for all. This has inspired me to continue my interest in public service and to pursue opportunities such as the U.S. Senate Youth Program. Mr. Matsky, you have encouraged me to pursue new opportunities and take risks, shaping my high school journey. Our school district's willingness to give flexibility to its students has allowed me to study abroad in Taiwan and serve as a U.S. Senate page last semester, both instrumental in leading me to this moment. I also wanted to mention how important the Spanish immersion program has been to me. Sonia Sotomayor, with Dr. Veek and all my Spanish teachers, has opened up so many opportunities. I just got in early action to Yale to study economics, international relations, and foreign languages. This is one of my top options. I will weigh all my options when I get admission decisions this coming March, but I plan on coming back to South Dakota after my education to help out my state in some way. Thank you, everyone, to the school board, my teachers, and fellow students for being a part in this journey. I'm eager to come back and bring new knowledge and experiences to share with all of you. Thank you.
Champ, would you like to introduce your guests with you? They might get a thank you, too.
My dad, Dr. Baumgartner, and my mom, Sarah Keen.
Any questions for Champ? No comments? Go ahead.
So, wow, congratulations on this, and I know you will represent Jefferson and Sioux Falls School District well.
Thank you very much.
You have a bright future.
Thank you.
We're gonna have some fun out in D.C. That's a wonderful place. Have fun.
Yeah.
I had the opportunity to be in girl's state when I was a junior, so those opportunities truly stuck with me and got me to where I am now. So it's really neat to see the long list of leadership things that you've already done. Congratulations on getting accepted into Yale, that's a big one. We look forward to seeing what you decide, but I'm more looking forward to you coming back.
Thank you.
So thank you for that dedication.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, congratulations. That's a lot of hard work in school and out of school, and I know you have worked hard on not just Spanish, but other languages as well, and have had some amazing opportunities. So it's fun to see when students take all of those opportunities and really take advantage of them and put them to work to see where their future will go. So congratulations, and I hope you can come back and give us an update of what you learned and what your experience was.
Of course, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Champ, I've known you for quite a while, and Sarah and Keith, and I just think sometimes there is some negativity to youth and people your age, and having you here tonight just solidifies just the goodness that is happening out in the world, people your age, and the opportunities that you have, and you're seizing them, and it also is such a bright light on public education. So to the extent while you're out there, you can just talk about the opportunities you have had from South Dakota, being a public-educated student. I think that would say a lot to our nation and to South Dakota.
Of course, I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank Lifescape for nominating the district for the award. Lifescape is a place that's near and dear to my family's heart, so that's awesome, for the district to be recognized by them.
All right, can I get a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the meeting held on December 19th and December 23rd, please?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those minutes are approved. I don't have any comments or people wishing to address us. Can I get a motion and a second for approval of the agenda tonight?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. We don't have any conflicts tonight. Can I get a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda, 9A through D?
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. And 10A, supplemental consent agenda, can I get a motion and a second, please?
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The supplemental consent agenda is approved with one abstention by myself. Next, we have some policies to review. Brett will take those.
On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, we have, as a part of our review revise of our policies, we have nine policies, and there are company regulations up for review tonight. You'll see the majority of the policies do not have any changes, just two small changes, one in Policy BE, which is for the school board meetings. There's just an update there for executive sessions to update a change in the law that took place in 2022, so that just recites what the change in the law was. And then the other change is in Policy BEDD, and that is just an update to the order of business for school board meetings to reflect what our current practice is. So those are the changes. Just again, on a review revise, they're up for approval tonight. If you don't have any questions, I'd ask for approval of the policies at this time.
I have a motion and a second for review revise approval of A through I on the policies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Thank you, Brett. Next on the agenda is a resolution that was sent to us from ASBSD in response to the school voucher proposal, and so I guess maybe I'll start by reading it. And if you're not aware of the legislation that's being recommended for school vouchers, please educate yourself, and we hope to do some of that with you here tonight as well. So whereas South Dakota public schools are a cornerstone of the state and the pride of their communities, welcoming all children, educating and feeding them, connecting them with friends and mentors, and helping shape their futures while preparing them to be the next generation of our state's workforce; whereas the proposed education savings account for the 2025 legislative session is simply a different title for a school voucher program; whereas research indicates school voucher programs consistently fail to improve academic outcomes; whereas the proposed program would be implemented by using millions in public taxpayer dollars to fund non-public schools that may pick and choose who they admit while also charging tuition and raising millions of dollars in scholarship funds, or to fund homeschool programs with no transparency or accountability measures to prove success similar to those required of public schools; whereas the state budget, which provides the funding increase for public education, faces constraints due to stagnant revenue collections, and as a result, their proposed increase in state aid for public schools is less than the level of inflation; whereas with lower-than-expected revenue collections creating a lean state budget, the introduction of a new, ongoing funding system for a school voucher program will eventually lead to an unbalanced state budget or a decrease in funding for public education; whereas the school voucher program will not stop at the initial amount as the intention to grow school voucher funding has already been stated even before it has been adopted; whereas the school voucher program planned and inevitable growth will be damaging to the future of our public school system, students, and communities; whereas we, as school board members, insist our legislators oppose the proposed school voucher program because of the foreseeable detrimental impact it will have on South Dakota's public school system at the expense of our students. So tonight, I would just invite the board to have a conversation about this so we can decide how we feel about this and share kind of what our experiences and knowledge has been over the past. So if anybody wants to start with any comments?
I'll start. Obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but I am opposed. There's a couple of things. The biggest thing for me is accountability. When I was running for office, I would get questions like, "Why are you against homeschooling?" I'm not against homeschooling. I'm not against anyone attending a private school, but for me, it's an accountability issue, and I made mention at a public speaking engagement, I was told that we won't send our kids to your schools because your test scores are so low. And I said, "Well, what are your test scores?" And she said, "That's none of your business." Now, maybe that's true, but if we're gonna spend tax dollars to support either private parochial voucher, whatever, then there's gotta be some accountability. I mean, it baffles me that we don't ask people to show us or measure what's going on. So that's my big issue. My other issue is rural South Dakota is, I think, is gonna be really harmed by this because they don't have any options. I mean, I don't, well, maybe there are, but they're small and far and few between. In this area, Sioux Falls, Watertown, Aberdeen, Rapid City, there's probably a lot more options, but for many of the students in South Dakota, there's not gonna be an option, and they're gonna be cut in their funding, or it's gonna have to come from somewhere. So those are two of my major ones, and I, as a longtime teacher, I went through this whole spectrum when we started having homeschool kids, which there are people out there doing a great job, I'm sure. But at that time, you had to have a teacher, or at least a certified teacher, to begin the home, you have a homeschool. And then that changed, which was whatever works. And then we went to where they would come in at the end of the year to the public school and do some testing to measure how things are going, and they were general tests that everybody else took. That went away. Now, kids that are homeschooled are able to participate in extracurricular activities, depending on how the school board rules on it. I mean, I don't know. And I'm not saying that people are misguided by wanting homeschooling or vouchers or whatever, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair. Okay? Right now, the way I understand it, and you guys can help me out, if you don't want your child in public education anymore, you just make a phone call to the school and fill out a piece of paper and send that paper to peer, then, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know where they're at. And I'm not saying it's my business where they're at, but as a public, as the people of South Dakota that pay taxes, we're somewhat responsible for kids. So we have people that do have that opt-out, and they leave our district, and we also have many of them that come right back. Now, I don't know how many, what you would wanna call that. I don't know what the name would be, but if I wrote a check for you to $3,000 and then you took your kid out of school for a month, and then you decided, you know, "This isn't so fun," or "It's not working out, we're gonna go back," did they have to pay that And we do have kids that their parents determine that they're gonna homeschool them, and then we get them back three months later, six months later, the next year, and now, depending on how things went, they're behind than they were. So that's my concern. I, I'm not against any kid anywhere to get an education, and I know that there are parents that do a good job, but to fund it without whatever, they don't have to participate in those schools in the same standards that we do with special education, kids with needs, they're not gonna take them. They're not gonna take them. We open the doors, and whoever shows up, we take in, regardless of your academic achievement, regardless of your income. We take you on, and we are very proud of that, and that's what we should do. But I don't understand how they can insinuate that we're just gonna, and I don't know if "cut 'em loose" is a good word, but I worry about this trend, and I feel that we live in South Dakota, and our public schools are pretty darn good. We have some really good things going on. So before I get too emotional, I'm gonna shut down. Somebody else can take over.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, you led with accountability, and something that gives me great pause, and I'm looking at it from a slightly different angle, because we're supposed to have more of a conversation on this, correct? My pause in terms of accountability comes more from the angle of House Bill 1020 that was offered up. I've got some questions around the swell of support behind that. Who's promoting this? Because we're elected officials here in the board, and have any of you received any type of communication from people that are supportive of this? Have we heard from any mayors? Have we heard from any city councilors, county commissioners, heads of chambers of commerce?
Business owners.
Business owners. So I'm curious, as an elected official, particularly when you're in the state legislature, one of your primary responsibilities is being connected with the people of South Dakota. And then as governor, you're to take on tasks and particularly develop a budget that's responsive to the needs of South Dakotans. So based on all of you as my colleagues, you've not heard anything of support towards a voucher program, or has anybody heard of support from private schools? So where is this groundswell of support coming for a voucher program? I'm just being really pragmatic. What's the accountability piece, and who's supporting that? Absolutely, I agree. Parents should have a choice, and they currently do have a choice. If we're looking at a voucher program to give $3,000 to each student, and then they can decide where they go, and I think she said particularly those students that are economically challenged, when you're looking at an education of $10,000 at a Gorman, let's be realistic here, and you get $3,000 off of that, that's for one child, if you're economically challenged, how far does that really go? So at the end of the day, we're taking the long approach to this and trying to move kids towards a public education. To Mark's point, public education, or private education, move them to private education, they can pick and choose who they educate. So do we want society moved to an elitist society where some people get an education, some don't, and then we label kids right off the bat with where they go to get their education, who they are, and what they're about? Maybe we should pause and really think about if that's the intention and the outcome that we want. On the upside, well, there may be some support for the school choice and using vouchers to it. Well, there may be some support, what I'm seeing, and this is being observant to what our constituents are saying, what I am seeing is a groundwell support for public education. The reason why is that it's an economic driver, it's a recruitment tool for our city as well as our state. You heard the gentleman here earlier. Look at the success that he's had and many others. That's because 80% of students in South Dakota are public-educated. So to have state legislators supporting a 20% that we're not sure if they're homeschooled, they're private education, that has me really question if they're representing we, the people. You know, there's few things in the public life, getting to be a public official, that really we have the ability to take a long-term look and really give it some significant consideration. And we pick and choose based upon the significance and the impact of what those issues have, and I don't know anything that's more important to all of us in South Dakota, we, the people, than taking a real long-term approach on public education.
I wrote something, so I wanted to be methodical with my thoughts, because there's a lot that circulates. As one who has kids in the district currently, I feel very strongly about this, so I'm gonna read what I have, but again, open the conversation on where this goes. As we enter this legislative session, I want to speak clearly about an issue that threatens the future of public education in South Dakota, school voucher programs. As a product of public schools, a parent guardian of three children in the Sioux Falls School District, and a proud school board member, I have seen firsthand the critical role public education plays in shaping individuals and communities. Public schools do more than educate, they provide opportunities and resources, and strive to build a sense of belonging for all students, regardless of their background or circumstances. School vouchers, however, threaten to undermine these opportunities by diverting public funds away from public schools to private institutions, often without accountability or equity. Here's what that means for our district and state. Public schools serve all students. In the Sioux Falls School District, 44.6% of students represent diverse backgrounds, 46.7% qualify for free or reduced meals, 16.2% are served through special education programs, and over 3,000 students speak one of 106 languages. Private schools receiving voucher funds are not required to serve these populations equitably or at all. Special education undermined. Our district currently serves over 4,100 students in special education, providing them with individualized education plans under the protections of IDEA. Voucher programs jeopardize these critical supports, leaving vulnerable students without services they need to succeed. Rural schools are hit the hardest, as Mark mentioned. As a graduate of Wabbe High School, where I was part of a class of 18, it's real, I know the importance of rural schools and their communities. Rural districts, which rely heavily on state funding due to lower tax, local tax revenues, stand to lose the most under this voucher program. Any reduction in state funding for education has a disproportionate impact on rural schools, potentially leaving them unable to sustain vital services. Vouchers drain critical resources. With over 24,000 students enrolled in the Sioux Falls School District and new programs such as JAG, Ag Pathways, Expanded Aviation, and ASL courses, cybersecurity partnerships in esports, that's just to name like a tiny handful of what we offer, we are constantly evolving to meet the needs of our community, and we listen to our community. Diverting public dollars to private schools would hinder these advancements and opportunities they provide. Research from the National Board, National School Board Association confirms that vouchers do not raise student achievement universally and primarily benefit families already in private schools. Meanwhile, public schools are left to address challenges like attendance, truancy, workforce shortages, and parental engagement with fewer resources. This isn't just about funding, it's about values. Public schools are built on the principle of providing every child, regardless of ability, income, or background, a fair chance to succeed. Vouchers abandon that principle. In total, there are over 137,000 K-12 students in South Dakota's public schools. I urge us to take a clear stance against school vouchers. Let's prioritize public education for the communities who rely on us to advocate for their future. Together, we can ensure that public schools remain a cornerstone of opportunity and community strength in South Dakota. Thank you.
When I taught, I did not teach history or government, but sometimes I think it's important to look to our history to help us guide our future. So I'm gonna give us a little historical perspective tonight. And the push to divert taxpayer dollars from public to private schools has a long and sordid history in our country. After the Supreme Court's 1954 Brown versus the Board of Education decision, some districts closed their public schools. Then, to get around the court's ruling against segregation, they used the money to provide vouchers for private schools that rejected integration. That's an ugly history, but that's how vouchers began in this country. And I'm not suggesting that segregation or integration is involved with this bill or this voucher scheme, but that ugly history needs to be kept in the past, and we can be very proud that our public schools admit and serve all students, which my colleagues have mentioned. In fact, our state constitution tells us this in Article 8. It is the state's ultimate responsibility to provide an education to our children. So Section 1, quote, I'm gonna read this, "Uniform System of Free Public Schools. The stability of a republican form of government, depending on the morality and intelligence of the people, it shall be the duty of the legislature to establish and maintain a general..." of the people, it shall be the duty of the legislature to establish and maintain a general and uniformed system of public schools wherein tuition shall be without charge and equally open to all, and to adopt all suitable means to secure to the people the advantages and opportunities of education. End quote. Note that it does not say that our responsibility is to provide tuition or scholarships to non-public schools or students. So how can a voucher program be in line with the words of our own state constitution? To me, it doesn't matter what we call them. K-12 education savings accounts, ESAs, vouchers, scholarships, whatever, regardless of the name, you know, the impact to me is the same. Vouchers and voucher-inspired schemes like scholarships divert public money from public schools, and it erodes public education, the foundation of our democracy. And I too have a very, very strong feeling about public education. I'm a retired educator and spent 41 years in public schools, and I too am proudly serving on the school board of a public school. Public education is the heartbeat of our nation, and we need to cherish it for what it is. You know, I will defend, like anybody here, I will defend any parent's right to homeschool or to send their child to private schools. I will defend that all the time, just not on the public's dime. It's not appropriate to use public money for private education. Educational research, like someone else spoke of, there's some education research from seven states, and this was provided by the Economic Policy Institute, that really defends that causal relationship between school funding and student achievement. Denying public schools, the funds necessary to educate students negatively impacts student academic outcomes. And the converse is true. We need to fully fund our public schools if we want to improve student achievement. One of my main concerns, and it's been spoken about, but having a special needs child in my family who attended the Sioux Falls Public Schools and received not only an appropriate, but a fulfilling education, is the fact that private schools control who comes through their doors. The students who may be medically fragile, the students like have been mentioned before have special needs, they're more likely to be turned away from a private school. Public schools follow the federal law, and we believe in a free and appropriate education for all kids. We try to provide the best education we can for any student who walks through our doors. In a year where the governor is also proposing 1.25 funding for public schools, school vouchers are not the way. School vouchers are a means in an agenda to divert public dollars and to weaken and destroy public schools. Therefore, I wholeheartedly support our proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you guys have all brought up great points. I think we've all thought a lot about this and what the impact might be, whether that's because we have kids in the district, grandkids, nieces, nephews, or because we just live here and care. You don't have to have somebody in the school system to care about the quality of education that we provide. And when you look at things like vouchers that are supposed to help students be able to select a better school for them, how do those students get to that school? There's transportation issues, there's attendance issues, things that we are already struggling with as a district is getting our kids to school. So creating additional barriers to that is not helpful to the education that the students would be receiving. We talked about rural schools, and they don't have options. They, they can't choose to go to a school that's an hour and a half away. That's not a realistic thing. And as people maybe start to do homeschooling, maybe then that school that their community is so proud of, it doesn't exist anymore, because there's not enough students there to support teachers and to support the community. So this isn't even just about Sioux Falls, this is about the state and how we as a state need to rally around having public school education. The number of people who have graduated from public schools and have gone on to do amazing things is high, and we continue to educate people, again, of, of every need, of every background, and be proud of that as well. So like my colleagues here, I also am very supportive of this resolution and anything that we as a group or individuals can do to help people to understand the need to talk to their legislators and help them to understand that, like Nan said, they're there to represent us. And there hasn't been anybody that has said to us, hey, what do you think? What are the risks of this? What are the benefits of this? I would venture to say that nobody has reached out to any school board to ask that question, even the private school school boards. Have they reached out to them to say, do you want this? Because I don't know that they do either. So I know people who homeschool and homeschool very well, and that is an amazing opportunity for their kids. They might travel, they might get to do all sorts of things. Those are not the kids that we're worried about. We're worried about the kids who are sitting at home by themselves while their parents may be using drugs or alcohol. We're worried about the kids who maybe aren't eating, they don't, they don't have the resources at home. They might be then led more to committing crimes, which all of us as a community should be concerned about. So when we can keep our kids in a structured environment, learning and having positive influences of the adults around them, that makes a huge difference. And the sad thing is, is that many of these students sign that piece of paper, their parents sign that piece of paper, and then they come right back to us. And not only then is that hard for that kid to try to get back into that classroom, that's also a stress on our teachers now, to try to bring their students back up to speed, knowing that that student or another student may leave again in a couple of months because they signed the paper again, and then they'll be back. So you've got this yo-yo, this boomerang, whatever you want to call it, which is just a huge disservice to the kids and their learning, and also a huge disservice to the amazing work that our teachers do, and the job that's already difficult for them to have to try to overcome that as well. So I think we've all touched on several different topics and are all very supportive of what this resolution states, and will continue to speak out about how we feel and how, how can we educate the public to know about this as well. So with that, I think I can say that now therefore be it resolved that we, the Sioux Falls School Board, oppose the proposed school voucher program for the 2025 legislative session. Can I get a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged. Thank you all for your thoughts. On that note, being a school board member is a very important job, locally here in Sioux Falls, but also in the state, and being able to network with people and support people. And we have an election that's coming up, and we want to make sure that people who are interested and want to learn more about it can come and find out about what it's like to be a school board member. What, what is the time commitment? What, what do you have to do? What do we do besides sit here on a second and fourth Monday night in front of all of you? Because I can tell you there's a lot more to it than that. So we are having a, a meeting on January 21st at 6:00, right here in this, in this room, where we will share some of the, the things that we have done. There are a lot of easy things, and there are a lot of challenging things that we, that we face on a weekly, monthly, or even annual basis. And so we would love to invite anybody that wants to learn more about that. We are not giving you a petition and making you fill one out when you leave. There is no commitment. If nothing else, come and learn more about what the service of a school board member is. And if you have somebody in mind, maybe encourage them to come. Sometimes people don't see themselves in a role until someone says that to them, that they see them in doing something. So if you think that there's somebody, a friend, a family member, somebody in your community that lives in the Sioux Falls School District that would like to be a part of our board, please invite them as well. All right. We will be going into executive session. Can I get a motion in a second for moving into executive session? SDC L1-25-22. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are in executive session.